Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 1st work session of the Board of Commissioners. Pursuant to subsection C-213 of the Home Rule Charter, an emergency meeting of the Board of Commissioners was called at 6:30 this evening on a briefing from Chief Viola on a safety matter. Everyone, please stand for this. The Chief agrees in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Secretary, would you please take the role?
Mr. DiMillo?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. McGarry?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Aliva?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
Let's say President Connell.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. On the agenda, we have a presentation that, a couple of months ago, it was apparent to me there was obviously an issue that we have in our community, and as Commissioners, we needed to do something and reach out. Although our job is fiduciary and what have you, and passing ordinances, but the safety and welfare of those in our community takes priority. And this evening, so what I did is, I asked, I reached out to our freshman legislator, Commissioner McCluskey, who has asked, had it to show up tonight. And Commissioner, if you would please embellish on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Connell. And I am very excited tonight that we have the Haverford Alliance for Drug Awareness here tonight to make a presentation to this board. It's an organization that has started within the last year, is really a grassroots effort. Their sole mission statement is to bring an awareness to this community and reduce the stigma of the disease of drug addiction that exists. It really is, I mean, if you turn on national news, it's a problem throughout the country. And I think a large part of the issue at this stage in dealing with this disease of addiction is really just in communities like ours, where we have great communities. We have to reduce the stigma that exists with drug addiction and the stigma that exists with opioid or heroin use. And this organization has really made great strides in the last year to bring that awareness to our community, and they're going to make a presentation to this board tonight, and hopefully, we can do whatever we can to aid them moving forward. So with that, and just let me say also that, thank you to Commissioner Connell and Commissioner Aliva and other Commissioners. You know, this is an issue that goes beyond politics or anything that happens on the Board, and I know all the Commissioners agree that this is one that, as leaders in this community, we need to address.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Peggy Mer, and I spoke to you folks back in November, right after the DA spoke to Jack Whelan. But it was a few new Commissioners since then, and our group's really gotten a lot more members. But I just wanted to kick it off. We're going to have five presenters tonight. You don't want to listen to me anymore. But I wanted to, I have to tell you how the group got started. I went to the funeral of my son's really good friend, and it was just a rough, rough day. And a lot of the mothers at the funeral said, "We have to do something." Fast forward a month later, and there was a big article in the Delaware County Times, and it said, "In one week, nine folks died of overdoses." And it wasn't just Upper Darby, and it wasn't Ridley. There were Haverford, Radnor, Swatmore, Glenn Mills. And as Kevin told you, the part of our mission statement is to remove the stigma. And some of our members are here tonight. We probably have at least three-quarters more folks than here, but we have some active members from our task groups here. And just to remove the stigma, we want to show, to remove the stigma, we want to show you real faces of people. And the mother of the young man that I went to the funeral, this is always the hard part, she's here. Anna Marie, could you stand up? She's here to help. She's here to help anyone.
Single.
Yep. Her child, Chris. I went through pictures to provide to her for the collage for the funeral, and I found pictures of Chris at the Chatham Park Halloween Parade. I found pictures at the stadium birthday parties, found pictures at the sophomore dance, and on and on and on, I found pictures. He was a normal kid, two loving parents. He was a varsity baseball player. And if any of you think that it can happen to kids in our town, don't believe it. And we're here so that nobody ever has to go through what Anna Marie had to go through that time. The rest of the group will introduce themselves now. They're going to tell you why they joined the group also.
Good evening. My name is Diana Madio. Our family lost Andrew Jonathan D. Fure. Our only son, two years, four months, and 10 days ago. I and Anna Marie are one of, are two of a growing group of Haverford Township mothers who have lost our sons and daughters to the disease of addiction. I am here tonight because I know the heartbreak and devastation of this loss. We want to work together, this group wants to work together with you, to educate the public and protect our children.
I'm Lindsay Anderson. I'm graduating with a degree in behavioral health counseling. Chris was my brother, and I'm tired of losing my family and friends.
Hi, my name's John Druin. I'm a resident of the township and a member of the Alliance. Professionally, I have a PhD in biological psychology, and my career includes over 20 years of studying the neural and behavioral mechanisms of drug abuse, including being a faculty member at the, in the psychiatry departments at Honeman University here in Philadelphia and University of Pennsylvania. I've since moved on into the pharmaceutical industry, where I currently work at AstraZeneca. But I've joined the Alliance just because, with the background experience that I have, I really felt that it was important for me to help out this organization in their effort to educate the community and really combat this epidemic that we're facing.
Great.
Hi, everyone. My name's Kate Stickle. I, you've heard from experts already, you've heard from mothers and sisters. I don't fall into any of those categories. I have not personally been touched by this epidemic, yet. I say "yet" because my kids are only six and eight. This is coming on us like a speeding train, and I know I'm going to have to deal with it very quickly. Peggy asked me to get involved, and I gladly said yes, because, as Bill and Mary will tell you, I'm a loudmouth, and I like to get involved in things. And I don't think you can sit back and complain about things if you don't get involved. So that's why I'm here. And I'm thrilled to be a part of this group. This isn't just the problem of the people who have been touched by it personally. This belongs to every single one of us in this township, and we all need to take ownership and figure out what we can do to help. So that is why I'm here. I'm also going to start by talking you, talking to you about what we want to share with you today, and we have promised we don't take up your whole night in any of other business. But first, we want to give you just a quick epidemic 101 to talk to you about what is going on, both nationally, in our state, and in here in Haverford Township. Right now in Haverford Township, we are dealing with an epidemic, and we're going to give you some information on that. Next, we want to talk to you about our group, what we are here to do, what we would like to ask from you, and leave everybody with a sense of what you can do when you leave these doors today to help out. Before we go, I just would ask that you read this. More Americans now die every year from drug overdoses than do in motor vehicle crashes. These families behind me are testaments that I've gotten to love them just in our work. So I'll apologize in advance for all the weepiness you'll see tonight. But this stat really hits home. I think a lot of us probably know somebody or know of somebody that died in a motor vehicle crash. That's going to shift. We're going to start to talk about this other epidemic in a new way. So with that, I want to turn it over to Lindsay, who's going to talk to us about the epidemic.
We're not here to talk about the crisis in America. We just want to talk about what this crisis means for Haverford Township. First, it's important to give an understanding of how big this issue is nationally and how fast it is growing. So here's some statistics. Every day, 2,000 teens in the United States try prescription drugs to get high for the first time. 60% of these teens who have abused prescription painkillers did so before the age of 15. One in four teens believes that prescription drugs can otherwise be safely used as a study aid. Teens abuse prescriptions at the same rate they abuse marijuana. 45% of those who use prescription drugs off a script prior to the age of 15 will develop an addiction. Most children who misuse a prescription drug were given the medication by a parent, relative, or close friend. One in 12 high school seniors report having used Vicodin for non-medical, aka recreational use. And also, Delaware County is home to the purest heroin in the country.
So when we talk about drug abuse and drug addiction, a question that always comes up is, why do people get addicted? And, you know, why can't people stop? And for those people who do stop temporarily, why do they keep going back to drugs like over and over again? And in the past, I think there's been, there's been a tendency to really stigmatize drug addiction. You know, addicts have been seen as people who maybe, you know, have a weak character or, you know, like lacking willpower and just unable to say no to drugs. But in fact, now decades of research have really shown that there are a number of physiological and neural changes in the brain that go on when somebody misuses and abuses drugs, somebody who's taking drugs frequently at very high doses. And I've listed three key effects that I'll talk to you about tonight. Before going into this, I just want to make sure that we're clear in that there's a lot of pain patients in the country. Actually, there's about 100 million pain patients in the country, about half to 45% that require something as strong as an opiate. And when they're taking these drugs as prescribed, according to a strict regimen, they don't necessarily become addicted. What I'll be talking about is really those situations where somebody is actively trying to seek out drugs to get that, that high, and they start taking very high doses very frequently. Likewise, there's some pain patients who, you know, without asking their physician, they may get some breakthrough pain and start self-medicating and start escalating their doses. And what happens is you get into a pattern of very frequent use of higher doses. And so we'll specifically refer to misuse and abuse in terms of what leads to drug addiction. Now, in people who, you know, start abusing drugs and misusing drugs, one of the effects that happens is, of course, a well-known rewarding or reinforcing effect, or pleasurable effect. You know, even pain patients may feel this, but often, individuals start seeking that high. And what happens is the drugs will act on, they produce these effects by acting on brain systems that are responsible for pleasure, reinforcement, reward. And when people start taking these drugs and taking them frequently, they'll act directly on systems that, you know, normally we might feel, you know, certain preferences or pleasures in life. But these drugs really act on these systems and almost kind of circumvent the other normal behaviors, so that people really start getting obsessed with drug-taking to the exclusion of other, like, normal pursuits, sports, whatever. So I think this is a key effect, and over time, what you see is drug addicts who are using drugs a lot will develop these really powerful cravings, so that their drug use really turns into an obsession. Now, the other effect that happens is tolerance, withdrawal, and dependence. And whenever anybody takes, really, a wide variety of drugs, the body reacts by compensating and kind of pushing back to kind of normalize the body. And this is true with drugs for abuse as well, is, you know, as you take a low dose of a drug, the drug will, the body will adapt to that. So you have to take a higher dose in order to get the same effect. And so what happens with people who are misusing or abusing drugs and using, like, opiates in particular, very frequently, you'll get this kind of tolerance, so that they have to keep increasing their dose in order to get the same desired effect. Now, what happens is when somebody then stops taking their drug, those mechanisms that have been compensating kind of overshoot, and they produce this very profound and significant aversive situation where, you know, a person will experience nausea, gastric cramping, runny nose, dysphoria, and a lot of, like, very noxious feelings that they really try to avoid. So that's a second factor that comes into play. And particularly with people who become very addictive, that is a very aversive state that they'll seek to avoid. And at that point, they're sort of seen to be as physiologically dependent on the drug. They need the drug in order to stay normal. And then another aspect that happens over time is, it's repeated misuse and abuse of drugs at high doses. There's an area of the brain called the prefrontal cortex that's involved in decision-making and, you know, self-control, self-regulation. And this area gets disrupted, so that people are less able to then regulate their own behavior. Even after they've stopped taking drugs for a long time, there's the strong cravings and the kind of inability to regulate their behavior and impulsivity really come into play to make them kind of more likely to take a drug when it becomes available to them. So between these three effects, you really get a constellation of actions on somebody where there's changes that have really induced a pathological state, like a disease state. You know, they start off really kind of taking more and more drug in order to get that high, or just, you know, because they're starting to develop tolerance and they want to avoid the withdrawal syndrome. And then they're unable to regulate their behavior after that. So it really takes quite an effort to work with these people, get them into treatment, and then help them so that they can have kind of long-term success in abstaining from chronic drug use. So I think one of the key things that we want to accomplish is, first, educating the community about the hazards of misusing and abusing drugs, and particularly in pain patients who may not realize the path that they're on as they start escalating their doses a little bit. But then also, really emphasize the importance of getting current addicts into treatment. You know, they're not criminals, they're really patients who need that treatment in the community. Now, the next slide, please. Now, in terms of, you know, actions in the community, I think there's, when everybody hears about drug addiction, everybody thinks, you know, that's something that happens in another community. It's not my kid, it's not happening in my town. But it really is happening in our town, and as it is across America. And I actually, the Northeast is particularly prone to exposure to heroin, because recently, there's a number of the drug cartels that have really set up distribution hubs within the Northeast, including in Philadelphia, in order to kind of circumvent some of the more traditional Southeast hubs that, now because of law enforcement pressures, they're really forced to seek other ways of getting drugs into the country, and they've come up to the Northeast. So we're seeing a lot in the Northeast, we're seeing a lot in Philadelphia, and we're seeing a lot come into Haverford. Thank you.
And I'll have to read you this slide. I think you know that we do have the problem here in Haverford Township. So we're going to, now we're going to talk about Haverford Township. In Haverford Township, from April of 2015 to April of 2016, we had 57 Narcan rescues. That's one, that's in one year. And I hesitate, I see Jim McCann sitting back in the corner, and Chief Viola, and Deputy Chief Hagan. I don't even want to ask them how many were in the last three months, but there's definitely a problem. Can you imagine if they weren't rescued, or our police did not have Narcan to revive them? That is a lot of saves that we've had. And thank you to the EMS and to the Police Department of Haverford Township. Most of the at-risk people in Haverford Township are the teens in their late twenties. We have some 20-something members of our group, and they went away to college. They graduated Haverford High in 2010. In 2010, they said, the young kids were, they were smoking, a few were smoking pot and drinking vodka, but nobody was doing pills. When they came back after graduation, just four short years later, they said so many of their friends that stayed here were doing opioids and painkillers. I mean, it's just, when you, when you sit and you listen and you talk to the 20-somethings, it's very scary. Also, right now, older adults are at risk, myself included. Seniors are having hip replacement and knee replacements, and the doctors really are not monitoring their pain medicine. So they have a prescription for opioids, and after a while, your immune system's down, they're older, and you can get addicted possibly in a shorter time period. My own son had a spinal tap, and he had a ton of pain, so we took him to the emergency ward, and it wasn't a hospital near here, I can say that. And they didn't really help the problem, but they gave him a 30-day supply of opioids. And for the next month, I was a nervous wreck, and I'm happy to say he decided, because he knows the work we're doing, he didn't take one of them. I was more, I was more worried about him taking those pills than the actual problem that he had. The most common path is these, the young folks, they are getting addicted to the opioids. Where it starts is, a lot of your high school athletes have injuries, and they're the ones that they get the prescriptions for the painkillers, and they get addicted, and they just can't get off the things. Also, Anna Marie will tell you, her son was in a bad car accident, and it was the same thing. He was 19 years old, and the doctors prescribed the opiates, and eventually you become addicted.
There's also, before that, in high school, we got hurt from all this stuff.
You'll see before you, I gave you a summary of a DEA report that was just in, it was issued two weeks ago, and actually, I sent you the whole report. When you go back tonight on your email, you'll have a whole copy of the report. But the most important thing you need to see here is Delaware County overdose deaths increased 41% in the last year, if you can imagine. And part of that is, I think that our, the folks in Delaware County, our, the morticians are pretty honest. We're actually, we recognize there's a problem, and we'll report it. The DEA SAC said that there's no standard reporting mechanism in the rest of the state. Though some of the counties, you'll see, they'll have no 0% increase, and none of us believe that, because it's happening everywhere. You can't, you can't help do anything about it if you don't know what the statistics are. And lastly, in Delaware County, overdose, there were 202 overdose deaths in 2015. And Jim McCanns will tell you, there's probably way more than that, because a lot of the coroners will rule it heart attack, or asphyxiation, or something else other than what it really is.
Or they didn't die here.
Yeah. And a lot of times, sadly, the autopsy takes a long time to get the toxicology back. So I can't even imagine what it's going to be next year, in 2016. So in Delaware County, we really have a problem. Next slide. And part of the problem is, once you get addicted to the opioids, and this is from DEA, by the way, we have DEA agents, two of them live in Delaware County, one lives in Haverford Township, and he has been here and talked with us. So this, these are not my facts, they're his facts. You can sell a pill of OxyContin out on the street, it has a street value of $30 a pill, and people get addicted, and they can no longer, they go to the doctor, the doctor shop, and they can't get another prescription, but by that time, they're addicted and they need the fix. So then they go to heroin, and that's why the heroin epidemic is here. You can get a bag of heroin for $5, and the dealers, they cut, they cut the heroin, you don't ever know what you're shooting up. They cut it with a drug called fentanyl, which is another drug that we're seeing way more deaths in this year. Two or three grams, like a salt gram, mixed into heroin can kill you. So you don't know what you're shooting up with. But the drug dealers want to give you the best high, so you come back and buy from them. So that's why it's so potent. And these young folks of ours in the township, they go to rehab, they come back, they fall off the wagon, and they shoot up with the same amount that they did before they went in, and that's where the overdoses are coming about. It's very sad.
Please take a moment to read this slide. So just addressing the issue of opioid abuse. Just imagine for a moment how many households in Haverford Township have a pill bottle of oxycodone, any kind of opiate, on their nightstands, in their medicine cabinets, and accessible and available to the children, the teenagers in their homes. Preventative actions, treatment for addiction, treatment for addiction, and proper responses to overdoses will help. I must say that our EMSs have been amazing in response, responding. I don't remember much about the evening that Andrew died, but I do remember a gentleman by the name of Victor, who sat with us, who spoke with us, and who consoled us through the entire evening. About our group, a little bit about our group. What we want to do, as Peggy said, is remove the stigma. There's a lot of addiction in Haverford Township that occurs behind closed doors that has never spoken about. I've been to meetings where I have met my neighbors, I have met the kids that my son went to school with, and if I had not attended these meetings, I would, I would not have known. We need to be here to support one another, to talk to one another, to help one another. We can work with our partners to educate all township residents about the dangers of the drugs that surround our community. Our partners, our partners are many, our township and officials, our schools, the school board, our medical community, law enforcement, even our clergy. We need to share information on drug prevention and rehabilitation programs. We've done some of this through our website, through our, excuse me, our Facebook page. And we need to make connections happen. I've been in touch with mothers who have lost children. We walk together, we talk together, we share experiences together. This has been a blessing for me, as well as them. What are we doing? We have been very busy in the past year. During the winter, we aligned with the Delaware County Heroin Task Force, met with the DA, the District Attorney and the Heroin Task Force, just to discuss what we can do in our community. In July, we participated in a DEA press conference where that report that Peggy mentioned was released. In October, we coordinated a DEA presentation to our Haverford residents. The DEA was president, present, three officials from the DEA were there to talk to Haverford residents. It was amazing, when I heard the questions that they, that they asked, these were mothers, fathers, 20-somethings. How much our residents don't know. What, they don't know what to look for, they don't know enough. In April, we had Narcan education. Jim McCanns was nice enough to do that. He took us through the administration, how to administer the Narcan, where we can get it, and he trained a group of residents. July 21st, our group addressed the school board to ask for prevention and education programs. Wonderfully enough, Superintendent Roushi had already put some things in place, the principal of the middle school has already started planning for the school year, so I think we have begun to make some, to move. July 12th, we met with Rick Knowles from the Y on planning educational programs and other opportunities for our kids that do not have many things to do after school. Our presence at community events and in community information and materials that we'd like to pass around to our residents. We were presidents, we were presence at Heritage Day, the Heritage Festival on Caricon. We had person after person after person after person, we had people come up and tell us their stories, their nieces, their nephews, their friends, their children, story after story after story. It's happening in our neighborhood. Thank you. Lindsay will tell you a little bit more about how we can work together as a group.
Hopefully by now, you can get a little bit of a sense that this is a real issue here in Haverford, so what can you do to help? Start by encouraging your neighbors to use the drop boxes at the Police Department. Not many people know that they're even available. Include information in your newsletters and on your websites. In your community meetings, mention our group and get us an invitation to speak, whether it be at civic associations, churches, other groups, et cetera. Encourage the school district to host preventative education programs, which Diane had mentioned we're working on. Keep the discussion going openly, honestly, candidly, and frequently. And last, and most importantly, speak up when you hear the stereotypes being reinforced, and encourage meaningful discussions. Thank you.
That's the end of our presentation, but I wanted to let you know that our group is holding a vigil on September 30th. is holding a vigil on September 30th before the home football game on Darby Road. I sent a message to the police department. And not only were they on board with it, they said they might be able to participate. We're very lucky to have a township police department that's our alliance partner. So, I'd like to give kudos to the police department. Also, the day after is Haverford Township Day and we put in a permit. And Gene, do we have it yet?
I have your permit.
Maybe you can help us with that. We want to, the group wants to march in the parade and we're going to have a table at Township Day. And we're going to encourage all the residents to turn in their unused medications at the police station. So, those are two events at the end of September that we would love for all of you to go. And the entire group, many of them are at home. We want to thank you for your support. And if you have any questions, we're up here to take them.
Mr. President, if you don't mind. All right, we'll start with Commissioner D'Amelio.
I want to thank you for coming this evening and informing us and the public and what you're doing to stop this terrible, it's a disease really. And I can't thank you enough. Peggy, I know you're involved in so many things in the community. I've known you from the first ward and fighting the billboards and now you're under this too. So, I thank you all for volunteering and taking the time to do it. And I want to invite you, I have a constituent meeting on the 21st at the Manoa Firehouse. Peg, you know, you've been to my meetings here. If you guys want to come to that meeting, I will invite you and have you-
Members, the Simcoxes, Drew, I think you know him.
Yeah, sure.
They would like to help with your meeting. We like to have, all of our meetings now, all of our members have the PowerPoint. And we think we have a representative from every community, or every civic association, or every ward. So, we'll get you somebody. Thank you, Steve.
Yep. September 21st, 7 o'clock. If you guys want to come, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you all again.
Thank you for allowing us.
Can I just ask a question?
Well, we still have a couple more, I'm sorry, just, yeah.
I just got a question about, are you a 501(c)(3)? Are you a non-profit or how do you, do you need financial resources or?
Funny you should ask.
Okay.
I'm proud to tell you that we're a Haverford Civic Council member. And for right now, the grants that we're applying for and some money for some of these events, we're going to be able to use their nonprofit status. And we want to thank the Civic Council for allowing that to happen.
Are you using them as a vehicle for, okay.
But we're, we would love to take donations.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have a donation, that's it.
Okay.
Anna Marie, her son had a beef and beer fundraiser last month and bought the Chris Lubbo Foundation and they graciously donated $500 from that fundraiser for this group to start.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? McGarty?
Yeah, I would also like to thank the group for coming tonight and making everyone aware. And I totally agree with what the group had said about Haverford Township, about it is right here. There's no doubt about that. I know Andrew, when Andrew passed a couple of years ago, two years ago, that was, that was one of the things in Haverford that happened. The last two months, I have been to three viewings for funerals for people 125, 124, and 138. And they were from this area. And basically, it's all over. And when you go to different meetings, like my wife and I have been involved with NAMI. And when you go to these different meetings, like I myself am a member of AA. And you go to the meetings, AA is no longer really Alcoholics Anonymous. It's really more drug-addicted people than it is alcohol-addicted people. In fact, 75% are probably more into the drugs than the alcohol. Not that it makes any difference, we're all, we're all subject to that disease. What you have to do to conquer the disease is go away. And when you go away and they tell you what to do, when you come out, it's people, places, and things. Don't go out with the people you used to go out with. Don't go to the places you used to go. And don't do the things you used to do. And I can honestly say, I listened to them and that was 33-years ago. But I'm lucky. I'm a survivor. But a lot of people haven't survived. But God bless the people like yourselves who are out there trying to help everyone to understand the problem that exists. Because it is a serious problem. And believe me, it's not going to get better. It will get worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, to all the people that have come out tonight, to all the mom and dads and the family members, thank you very, very much for taking your tragedy and turning it into action. It's got to be the most difficult thing to do. And with that, I would like to, I think the Board of Commissioners probably would like to be an alliance membership as well. And we'll get together, we'll ask on how we can approach that. But also, we have a newsletter, as you know, that comes out three times a year. And the next newsletter is in, for the winter newsletter. And if we could please have an article dedicated that we can put into our newsletter, get it out there. And please, three times a year, if you wish to, we can do it three times a year, however many times. Tonight, we're reaching out and we want to know, how can we help you battle this issue? Another thing is that Lori, the September 30th vigil, we can advertise that, we can-
I've sent your community newsletter to the publisher, but we can, we could put the brakes on, we can pump the brakes if you can get something.
Okay. Do I send that to you, Lori, or?
Yes. Lori Woodup will be the contact person for anything with the newsletter, the articles.
We have, some of the folks that are here right now, we have save-the-date cards, we have the graphics all done, so we can get that to you. It's finished already.
In electronic format for the publisher?
Yep.
Would be perfect. Thank you.
We're very lucky and within our group, we have graphic artists, we have chemists, we have nurses, and we have a beautiful writer here.
Do you have a set size or anything that you'd prefer, or is it just text? What are you looking for? Well, why don't you send over everything that you've got and we'll see what room we can come up with for this. And we might have to-
Kate will write the narrative and I have the graphics of the save-the-date cards.
Very good.
And we have that dedicated newsletter. And tonight's presentation will also be available to our residents. And it'll be replayed again as well. Chief, you have a couple of things-
September 30th, we will be there for the vigil. And also, for your, for Haverford Township Day, Tim, they don't need a permit to march in Haverford Township, they just have to contact you, am I correct?
Yeah, just fill out, Kate.
You don't need a permit for that, so.
I sent it in already.
Okay, so you don't just, we'll get you there for sure, okay?
Do they need a booth?
Yes.
That's all, okay.
I've requested it already.
Now, I do a question you had, there were 57 Narcan rescues in 12 months. But we don't know, fortunately, there are those that did not survive. Did we know the actual number? You say one time, I think there were 200 calls in Delaware County in a-
Yeah, hold on, I actually have the stats right here with me. Go on. Go on.
If you want to.
Go on.
Mr. McCanns, wasn't that Victor that Diane was talking about, wasn't that Victor Berg, your assistant?
Victor Berg.
And he's still with us?
Very much so.
This is EMS Director Jim McCanns.
Thank you. Hello. Thank you again, and I admire your work. It is phenomenal what you're doing. It's one thing to be able to go up, much, compares to the fire department. It's one thing to be able to go and fight a fire. But if you can prevent it in the first place, that's the real, that's the real difference. That's really, it's so hard to put a number on that. There's no way you'll ever know how many people you saved, you just have to know that you did. So, as of today, coming in from last night, I'm going to give you stats from the very beginning of the program. On November 26th of 2014, Delaware County started, where the first county to have every police department, every police officer issued and trained with Narcan in the Commonwealth. Since then, we have had 300-
Jim, could you, hey Jim?
Yes.
Could you explain what that is? So, I don't think most people know what that is.
What, for what?
Narcan.
Oh, okay. That is the reversal agent, the antagonist for an opioid overdose. If it's given in the proper period of time, it can very quickly reverse the effects. The state of Pennsylvania was very aggressive in overcoming a number of the hurdles for prescription drugs. It is a prescription drug, but it's very, it's the only drug that any of us know that's anything like this, in that it's a pure antagonist for only one other medication. It fights opioids. It occupies the same receptor sites in the body and displaces the opioid. So, we can reverse the effects almost instantly, but we need to get it into the person. A few years ago, it was formulated so it could be sprayed up inside the nasal areas and once sprayed, absorbed very quickly, and we can get the effects of reversal. It really has no side effects of its own. People have been given thousands of times the dose, it has no, no effect on you unless you were to take an opioid. The opioid wouldn't work until this, the other medication were off. It's also known as naloxone. That's actually the generic name. Now, it's known as Narcan and is produced, marketed, and distributed by Depp Pharmaceutical, which is in Radnor, Pennsylvania now. So, Delaware County is very aggressive. They got it out and the whole state was very aggressive in skipping the procedures that are generally needed to put medications in the hands of rescuers. And up to the point where the physician general, I believe, of the state signed a prescription for every person in the state. There's somebody at risk, somebody who has the, an addiction, is trying to overcome it, parents who are concerned, you can go to any pharmacy in Pennsylvania and get this prescription drug issued to you as there is a prescription for you. It's not over the counter yet, that takes a lot more time. This is a faster way to get it into the hands of those who could give it. But back in, in 2014, it was very aggressively put in the hands of first responders, police, fire. EMS has had, and I'm showing my age here, since I became a medic in 1983, we've had Narcan. And it started in the 70s, it was in the hands of EMS. But it had to be given via needle into a vein. Since the formulary changed enough, now we can give it the other way. And anybody can give it, now it's needle-free. So, since that date, this is for Delaware County only, and this is for police administration. I'm going to give you a chilling number here. The police had given this medication 327 times in the, in Delaware County. They've reversed 303 people. So, they've gotten the desired effect. Police being there very quickly, squirted up the person's nose and reversed them. Interestingly, three people were resuscitated from cardiac arrests who were independent of opioid. They did not have an opioid on board, but the police officer responded very quickly, gave Narcan, they gave naloxone, which would have had no effect in that situation, but started CPR immediately. And just because of that aggressive response, three people were resuscitated. So, out of those numbers, 214 male, 90 female. Ultimately, through those numbers, 20 people have died. And that was the difference in the 203 to 327 plus the other non-opioid relateds. The chilling thing I'm going to tell you is, appears throughout the county, that EMS gives the medication six times to every one time the police give it. Just heard that there's 327 attempts by police. EMS is giving it quite a bit more. This is by far the number one drug we give. And I'll tell you very openly, as I said very early on, one of the first ways I'd start to talk about this is, I've never seen anything like this. This is a true, true outbreak of proportions. If this, if this were the flu, or one of these, or Ebola, we would seek it, we'd have, you know, Haverford Town would be walled off. But it's different. And it's purposefully hidden to a big degree. These people, all of us are trying to shine some light on it. And it affects so many families in Haverford Town. I don't know a family that hasn't been affected, mine included. Thanks for listening. We're still, you know, at the forefront, EMS is trying to make the rescues. We're hand-in-hand with the police department, still doing a tremendous job. We're working hard, but the fact that people are stepping up for prevention is remarkable. Thanks. I'm glad to be part of this community.
Thank you. Anybody else, anything? Thank you very much. And I would like to just say that the Board of Commissioners, they join me, applaud you in all the efforts that you do for our community.
I just had one last thing to say. Some of the Civic Council members are here. We missed the part where they asked me if we had a nonprofit vehicle. And I said that I was a proud member of the Civic Council and we're now going to be using the Civic Council nonprofit. And I'm sorry you didn't get to hear the presentation, but the commissioners were a wonderful audience and we're proud to have them in the police department as alliance partners. Thank you for coming to support us.
Moving on, Mr. McLaughlin is our construction manager for his commissioner's update on the new building.
Nice to see everybody again. Phil McLaughlin, Reynolds Construction. Tom Frisgudis is our onsite construction manager for this project. Some of you that have been out there have seen him already, working with John and the rest of the team. This will be a very bare-bones report. This is a report from June 15th to July 15th. We picked that as an arbitrary stop date. We have to stop somewhere and, you know, put a point on there and go backwards and show everything that's happened, what's going on. So, I'm going to move through this fairly quickly. You should have this electronically as well, Lori, is that correct?
Should be up on the computer.
Okay, very good. And this, but this will be the format we'll follow each month as we give you the report. That's just a table of contents. So, when we go to the executive summary, we're talking-
I don't have that one as easily as you are, read. My old age, my dotage.
You need my glasses.
No, I got my glasses. So, we've been in our construction for approximately three weeks as of the date of this report. Another 55 weeks remain for substantial completion. And the only application for payment as of this report was one application for payment that was for bonds and insurance for one of the contractors that they have mobilized, however. The project has incurred about $628,000 in soft costs against a budget of $3,620,000. There's a summary for that and I'll go through that later on. We have no exposure against our construction contingency at this time. We have a 90-day schedule, that will be in a further section. The summary of issues, we only have one issue, and that is that the bid schedule showed a notice to proceed date of June 13th, 2016. The actual notice to proceed date was June 24th, 2016, which is 11 days later. We will continue to monitor that to see if at some point in time, we need to issue a no-cost extension of time of 11 days to contractors. Understand that the contractors bid or word of the contract based on that schedule starting on June 13th, not June 24th. And normally, we get in front of this early on, it's very easy to get the contractor sign that no-cost extension, rather than go to the end of the project and then come to us for a delay claim and extended overhead and all those things. And there is cost involved in that. So, that's the way we manage that. So, the project status, the GC is mobilized. If you've been by there, you've seen the fencing and the dirt, the trees coming down and all that sort of stuff. Submittes are processing, shop drawings, those sort of things. Schedule values have been received. All the clearances for contractors onsite obviously are received and verified before the contractors land on site and their Public Works employment verification forms. So, that's pretty much throughout all of the five contracts. You're going to see that that's where we are. The electric contractor's been out and hooked up a trailer. We have a job trailer out there, board of potties along with all of the fencing and dirt work that's going on. This is the pay requisition, summary sideways. As I said, we only have one pay rec. As we move forward, you will see that more often and you'll be able to see, at the very bottom of that table, we'll have that thumbnail schedule, be able to tell you what's, what the contract amounts are, what the billed-to-date amount is, what the retainage is, and what yet to build is, any change orders. So, then there's a soft cost summary and change management. This is, again, is your soft cost summary. The bulk of the $600,000 is the architects' design fees. And all architects bill normally through, 80% of their fee is billed through start of construction. The balance is billed during construction for their construction administration and paperwork. So, we're doing fine on soft costs. Lori provides me with an update on a monthly basis, or more often as she gets bills and we update and track all the soft costs for you. This is part of the number that you saw when I gave you your overall budget presentation several months ago before we went out to bid. So, you have a construction cost and soft course cost form the total project costs. Project schedule, again, this is, I know it's kind of tough in this format, I guess I could rotate the view if I was smarter. But it's, this is just- I could rotate the view if I was smarter, but it's, this is just the 90-day look ahead. Contractors, the process of doing the full schedule for the entire project. When we have that, we'll be able to present that in a, in a more readable form for you. Projects on schedule, we're monitoring that. And then here's, here's project photos, starting at the top, cleaning up the debris, demolition of the monument site, well, probably should have said relocation of the monument site instead of demolition. The monuments, of course, were removed, and are they, are they over here already?
Yeah.
They've already been placed over here, so they were very careful about that. I know that was a great concern to everybody, so that's been taken care of. Some pavement removal, if you're up there, recently, almost all the payments removed in front of the scadium now. Fencing is a place. Chief Viola, Mr. Hagen over there, I'm, you know, I'm sure we're talking every day and make, trying to make, keep everybody safe, but keep all your, all your traffic moving and still allowing people access to the police station. Fence is going in, good signage out there. The trees are down, it looks, the property looks different already. I will say that coming back out of Columbia, back onto Manoa, it was amazing how much the sightlines have improved, just being able to see down. I know we all love our trees, but sometimes they, they, they tend to outlive their usefulness. And those, those are just further shots of removals and, and the ongoing work that's been, that's happening there. And there's our trailer over at the oil yard. We're all set up over at Boyle Oil there, over there, and got a great lay-down area. It's really going to help the project stay right on track. And that's really where we are for now. Happy to take any questions. If I can't answer them, Tom's here to answer the questions if you have any.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Okay.
This time.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, the library update will, is moved to the September meeting. Chief for the police department, crime update?
You can get it back.
Okay. Well, right now, does anybody have any, as far as the agenda goes, does anybody have any questions or concerns regarding the 2016 general obligation bond? That's the second reading. And then we have the, a first reading on the regulations for operating radio-controlled objects. That's a new ordinance. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Commissioner Holmes?
Is that, are we voting on that next week? I thought we needed a report on that.
I did think we were voting on it.
That's my recollection as well.
Yeah, we weren't supposed to.
It's a first draft, and you guys are just going to be looking at it next week, next week.
Say that again?
It'll be a first draft, you haven't seen it yet, I don't think. Like, it's not attached to this agenda.
Yeah.
Right. We don't have, I mean, there was a lot of questions about that ordinance last time it came up, so I expected us to get it.
It's been changed significantly from the last time it was brought up. It's now just restricts flying roads over highways, PennDOT roads, township roads, and township public spaces. The original draft that you saw really talked about restricting it over like other people's private property and the police getting a permit, and that has been totally revamped.
When do we expect to have that language?
Gloria has it, so I'm sure she can circulate it. I can circulate it to the board as well.
Yeah, I'd like to see it prior to the, to the meeting. I thought that's what we were going to get.
Well, that's what the draft will be for discussion, the first.
We're not voting on it, right?
Well, you're saying first reading here, so.
But it does say first reading.
You can make it a discussion if you want to consider it.
I think it should be a discussion.
Yeah, I agree. I didn't, I mean, I agree, Larry. I didn't think we were voting on that. I thought we were going to get information about it.
Was to make it part of the next work session.
Yeah.
I would suggest that maybe you look at it at a work session in September. I'll circulate it to the board.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think. Mr. President, I think that's the wise thing to do. I mean, we all have questions, concerns. Let's, if we could put it on the agenda for the work session, that'd be great.
Okay, we'll certainly do that. So we're going to move that to a discussion for the September work session.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice to know also what other townships are doing with regard to this same issue. So it'd be interesting to see what other, see if we're doing the same things.
That'll go out probably tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Move to September. Okay, chief is back?
I am. Chief of Crime Report for July 2016, 264 traffic citations issued, 127 parking tickets, 192 written warnings. There was an attempted burglary on July 18th in 100 block of Fairland. Security tabs were broken on the windows, but no entry was gained. On 7/31, the 300 block of Walnut Hill, the homeowner found handprints on the second-floor window. They attributed that to the fire company. Were there an alarm call, probably trying to get in to see if everything's okay in the house? On 7, July 11, 2016, there were 17 cars that were entered in Westgate. All of them unlocked. Most of them were small items, $5, $10, with two, one car with $50 in it, one car with $40 in it, all had credit cards and loose change. We had 600 block East Manoa for a car entered, two cars on Maple Shade on July 21st, and one car on the 700 block of Buck Lane for a car, and it was $2 taken. We also had a rash of theft from landscaper vehicles, when the landscapers are working behind a house, their trucks are out front. There has been leak blowers taken from three, three landscapers' vehicles on 7/23, 7/26, and 7/28. We have a description of a vehicle, no license plate, but we're working on that now. K-9 usage vehicle investigation on 7/1 for a search, a vacant house checked on 7/11, tracked for driver who fled, fled from the vehicle on July 14th. And then 7/23 vehicle investigation, drugs located, a juvenile with petition to court.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you, chief.
Mr. President, can I add to the, something about the police?
Absolutely.
On.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, the, the police are hosting a national night out, as all communities do throughout the nation. It's an opportunity to meet our police, including the K-9 units. You'll get some safety tips and see some of the equipment that the police use every day to combat crime and to solve crime, actually. Fire companies will be there as well. And this will be at the Lowe's lot on the Township Line side, and there will be hot dogs and water ice, and the time is 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
We have sponsorship with the help from Lowe's and from the Giant Supermarket to help us fund this project that we do every year.
Thank you. Let's see, okay, next on the agenda is a second reading for traffic. Following that is ordinance P-17216 for a traffic reading. That's a first reading. Any questions? Waverly Road's in a second ward. Okay, then we have one, two, three, four PennDOT resolutions regarding the traffic signals on Eagle Road, one dealing with Lawrence Road, the other one at West Darby, another one at Hillcrest, and then another one at, again, on East Darby. Anybody have any questions or concerns about the? The PennDOT resolutions?
Dave, can you just explain what those resolutions are going to be doing?
Sure.
Thanks.
In general, PennDOT, since we are Havertown Township, all the traffic signals in Township, we're responsible for ownership and maintenance. That's PennDOT, this is PennDOT's way of confirming that you guys are elected officials or aware that they're going to be modifications. These are all modifications that YMCAs require to do. Very briefly, the first one at Lawrence Road is, is the modest curb work we talked about before, restriping, handicap ramps, new signals, and fiber optics is going to connect to Hillcrest Road. The second one, which is Hillcrest, is just that, it's the other end of the fiber. So similar to what we talked about before with the traffic adaptive, we're going to get a fiber interconnecting those two signals as part of what the YMCAs require to do. The East Eagle Road, East Darby and Eagle, which is the intersection by the church, is new handicap ramps and some timing changes. And the West Dar, West Darby Road by the Y, by the YW is just timing changes. Or, or being required, or being implemented by the YMCAs.
Dave, when will Westchester, when did you say that was going to be completed? I'm sorry.
Well, Westchester Pike, the triangle.
Well, from, aren't we going all the way from?
We applied for a grant.
We applied for the grant.
We've got two grant applications.
I thought that, I'm sorry, because what, what were they doing on Westchester Pike to put new signals in, right?
The triangle, the triangle on Westchester Pike, we're putting a traffic adaptive there. Darby, Darby Road, Township Line, you know, the three, the three intersections there.
But I also, I saw on, on Westchester Pike and Glendale, they put new, those poles with the, with the timer thing.
Just the handicap ramp stuff with the push buttons.
Is that the new, they're just new, it's nothing to do with.
Nothing to do with. The handicap ramps were being done up and down Westchester Pike. They're actually up at Darby now.
I thought Larry told me to.
The pad buttons were just moved.
Yeah, I think Larry was mistaken. I thought he thought it had to do with the timing.
It's like a handicap ramp.
Hey, right there at Eagle Road and Westchester Pike, when you're going in, you know, in that, in the direction right here, there's like three cars get through, and that's it. Then on the other side, there's like nine or 10 cars that get, when you're making a left turn. So on the left arrow, there's three to get through going this way, but going, coming up from down Steel Road that way, there's about nine or 10 cars get through. So why, why can't they have that light adjusted? Yeah, can you? Because that, I've had a lot of complaints.
There are more cars, I think.
Are you talking about Eagle and the West?
Eagle and West.
Eagle and the Pike.
Jimmy.
Because cars in front of Manoa, fire companies, more cars going in this direction.
Right, right.
And cars going the opposite direction, less going towards the firehouse. That's why it's timed that way.
Yeah, but there's still a lot of people, John.
Three cars can make left, you're correct.
Yeah.
But there's just more.
Can we just double it to six? They're all going to McDonald's, you know that. Okay, thank you.
Just to reiterate, Dave, though, what we're voting on next week involves the traffic improvements from the Y at Eagle down to the YW and the lights, right? Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure we were.
That's going to help with traffic?
Okay, we have a resolution for a minor subdivision.
Yeah.
1235 Steel Road. I believe I said. Pardon me?
I don't have.
Okay. The, the purchase of 328 Spring Road. Agreements on contracts, the sidewalks maintenance agreement for College Avenue between Harford Township and PennDOT. Questions?
Does everybody know what that is?
Here, Lewis, you want to?
That's a, an agreement that we negotiated with PennDOT. PennDOT was not going to have any sidewalks on the reconstructed College Avenue Bridge, and we were able to convince them to, to put at least one sidewalk in, and they said they would do that on the basis that we would maintain it. So that's what, that's what this is about.
And that's, that's just, my, my, let's go right through there. People use that to go across to Havertown, they use the trail to Havertown College, so they were going to take that away, so a lot of people were.
Yeah, PennDOT didn't think it was being used, but it is used a lot to access Harford College, as well as workers and so forth. So it is, before they had a five-foot wide shoulder, which we felt was unsafe, and we appealed to PennDOT, and they reconsidered their decision and came back and said they would put a sidewalk on, on the basis that we would, we would maintain it. So talking to Larry and others, we felt that was a good trade-off.
And next, anybody have any questions regarding the emergency sanitary sewer contracts and the lining for sanitary sewer jobs?
Mr. President, can I go back?
Absolutely.
Could somebody, somebody explain to me the purchase of 328 Spring Road?
That is for the stormwater management. The resolutions that we put out prior to that, remember the, the people, we put in grants, actually put in several grants the last couple of years. And we did get the, we were successful in the most recent grant with $115,000 to put towards the purchase of this. Now, does this require an ordinance for state purchase?
Okay. State purchase, I'm sorry, we're purchasing it or the state?
Well, we're purchasing, but under the, is it a state guidelines?
It's the Home Rule Charter, under the Administrative Code, rather. An ordinance is required for purchase or sale of real property.
It's properties.
Which neighborhood is this one? I just don't, where's 328 Spring? Is that in that?
That's the, we're down at the lower end, the two houses we've been talking about that have.
Right, down where Arlington and Township Line. That whole thing that comes down, okay, all right. And this is one of two properties we're going to purchase?
Properties, yes. The application for the second, for one of the grants, both these properties were in grant application. One was accepted, so we've reapplied, and the reason for that is that it'll help offset the cost of purchasing the homes. Because one was accepted and the other one wasn't, and we're reapplying, we don't want to go forward in purchasing the other property, because if we were to do that, then, and the grant was approved, we couldn't use that money to go towards that property. So that's why we're waiting for that second property.
So we're buying it first, but we're waiting to hear about the grant before we buy the second?
Exactly, right.
Do we need both to accomplish what we want to do, or is either helpful?
We need both to accomplish, because of the, the sections, the two sections there, those two homes are the ones that completely get flooded out constantly. And I think the one has become a dog park, and the other one is green space for educational, environment education. I have that right, Dave? Yeah, thanks.
We're going to, this first house we're buying, we're going to tear this house down? Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
And it's going to be, that's going to help us, we're going to abate the flood issue with that?
Yeah. Dave, if you want to, can you add live on?
Abate's not the right word. I mean, you're not going to, you're not going to solve the flooding issues in, this is the area up above Township Line.
Right.
Up to Chatham Glen Park, but what you're going to do, frankly.
The post office, right? This is that flooding area.
Exactly, it comes down and ends up in the Pico Golf Course. What you're going to do is, frankly, the biggest thing you're going to do is take a structure out of harm's way, one which is located in a place where you couldn't build a house today, it's directly over where the stream used to go. And when it rains real hard, the water's going back to where the stream used to go. And it's an old house, it used to have a spring going through it.
Right.
You know, like a mill. Like a spring, like your basement. So when it rains real hard, even though the pipe, the water was piped and directed over there, when you have heavy rains, it goes right through this house. So it's, it's, it mitigates the property damage, this property, and helps to abate some of the downstream stuff, but it will not solve the downstream issues. One other, one other component, Chris, if you remember, there's, there's a second part of, these are DCNR grants, and there's a second grant application that's in for this same property to help with the debt. You can't, anything you spend money on that, you can't get any money for, but it'd be for the demo and modification of the property. I think we're going to wait to demo the house until we hear about that, I believe. That's for, that's for a lot less money, but it's still something that's into the state with an October timeframe.
What's the effective cost of the township?
Well, now, when we, what the appraisal is in, now, what do we discuss on a real estate matter, an executive session, or?
That would be an executive session matter.
So we would, we would discuss that in the executive session. And then we would do that prior to the August.
Prior to an ordinance that would authorize the purchase, yeah.
So that'll be done in August? We'll have an executive session next week?
Isn't this August?
I think there was.
I mean, next week, next week.
Scheduled next week. I believe there is one scheduled next week.
Is it?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Hard for me to know the, the last week or two.
Okay, ultimately, we have to disclose the purchase price, right?
And there's an appraisal on the.
Yes.
That's why the appraisals on the agenda, that's why I'm trying to get a sense.
There's appraisal on then what we would pay for.
Isn't that something the board decided we were going to do? Didn't we decide on that? We decided.
Did, yes, but we had to make it official.
This is something that was discussed in the past, right?
It has to be documented and made official, yes.
That's all we're doing.
Right. Don't remember a discussion on this particular property.
We did.
Anything further?
Nope.
And nothing, and then the last we have there is a proclamation for next week. And nothing, and then the last we have there is a proclamation for next week. Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, I do, Mr. President. Recently, as you know, and some of my colleagues know, First Ward, not only the First Ward, some other wards have had issues with rodents. And the First Ward, some of the streets particularly, had a real bad problem. Township, the Township reviewed some of these properties and advised the residents, and I want to say this again, if you have bird feeders, you need to remove the bird feeders. It's the number one reason why rodents come to an area. So if you have bird feeders, please remove them, stop feeding animals if you think you're doing a good thing. Unfortunately, you're not. You're bringing in more rodents, and it's a problem. So you have to take some steps to combat this, and that's one of the steps, or two of the steps you can take. The bird feeders, Lori?
Yes.
You clean up after your pets.
Oh, that's another one.
Lori, microphone.
Clean up after your pets, put the lid on your trash cans. We can, generally, we get a lot of complaints, Nancy will go down the street to take a look, and she'll see one trash can after another with the lid off, and the bags are chewed. So they're feeding from our trash.
Right, and we don't really know the reason why. I mean, we did get an email from Bob McCree about the area around St. Dennis, did you see that?
There's a lot of construction going on.
I did, and I think that was responded to. I think people went and it was, I don't think that was the cause, and I think Larry Gentile was pretty.
Oh, yeah, I know, I'm not bringing up that part of it, but they were there.
The construction on Eagle Road has a lot to do with it.
But I was told that that may not be true, is that right, Lori? Or what do we think it is? Well, number one, we don't have the cats we used to have roaming. Really, and that's one of the reasons, when you had cats and you had foxes.
Well, I think a lot of times people thought it was related to the YMCA construction.
That's not true.
That's, and that's been done for five years. So I think that what Commissioner Oliva's talking about is.
Is the gas line going in.
The utility lines going on Eagle Road. Might be disturbing whatever pipelines they're living in now, but, yeah, there's a number of reasons why.
Yeah, 'cause we see it every time we have some big project right near you there, in your ward, we're seeing that happen at St. Dennis. Whenever there's a lot of construction going on underground, they come out.
They, one of the things that neighbors can also do is check in your backyards, if you see this round circular hole, it's a rat den, they're going in and out of those holes. I don't know how big they are, it's a conference, what about, about maybe three inches? They're about that wide, I think.
Pretty good size.
Depends on the rat.
They're, well, a resident, believe it or not.
Bigger than a chipmunk hole.
I'm sorry?
It's bigger than a chipmunk hole.
Yeah, they are. And a resident actually sent me, he videotaped it and sent me one today, and he lives on Harrington, so that's close to where Eagle Road is, where a lot of that's happening. But last year, we had a problem in Harrington, and they had, some residents had bird feeders. And unfortunately, you have to take them down. It's the only way to control it, and stop feeding wild animals.
Yeah, and just call the Health Department, too. Just have the Health Department come out and check.
And I must say, they, the Health Department has been busy, they've been very, very helpful. Nancy's been doing a great job, I appreciate everything that she's doing, and your office, and Larry, for, you know, at least trying to figure out what was going on in the beginning, because on 300 Greenbrier, it was pretty significant.
Yeah, well, Nancy and Joe and Lori had pointed out that a couple things, the high grass in the back, the dog cleanup, also wood piles. There's the little rats get inside the wood piles, and, you know, that's a situation there. So that's, and then, of course, the trash cans without lids on them, that were the four things that were pointed out to me.
No, I was also told that there may be a problem in Brumal, is it, you think anything could be related, at least in my ward, but I thought Bill's was closer, his ward was closer to that site, the Don Gwinella site. Are they doing anything there that may have disturbed anything?
They haven't done anything there.
In fact, I heard that's off the table now, is that right?
Correct.
Right.
Some of the work in the Ninth Ward has been Upper Darby's work, Township Line and Pullman Gardens section.
All right, well, thank you, I just.
How about talking about the job the cleanup did for Harford Township, the men and the employees and all, the trees down and all, the tree gangs, they did.
What a great job, they did, Jimmy.
Okay, you're the Public Works.
Well, I mean, the trash fellas were out there, you know, numerous times, picking up yard waste and picking up all these different things. Terry Heenan's crew with the tree gangs, they've been out numerous times. They're still not caught up yet, and they're trying to get over to the trail, which they can't get to yet because they still have numerous trees in some of the parks. I know Grassland has some in Bailey Park, just for instance, and there's still a lot out there to get, and every time they get just about caught up, another storm comes along, so.
I tell you, they got roads open fast. We had a lot of damage in the First Ward as well, and Terry Heenan and his guys came out there, it was amazing. And I must say, I'm one of the commissioners, and Dan will tell you, that we've criticized Pico, but I tell you what, they did a good job this year. They really came back online with power relatively quickly. So I want to thank Pico as well. I don't know what they're doing differently, but certainly was a big help to get power back.
Well, now, Pico has been redoing the infrastructure for the last several years throughout our area. The thing is, for many years, people would plant trees anywhere and everywhere, and fortunately the Harford Township tree tenders came in, and I really strongly suggest that anybody wants to plant a tree on their property and through the township is that they reach out to the township through the Harford Township tree tenders, so the tree can be, and the proper tree, placed in the right location. Because what happens is people put shade trees up and around wires, and then Pico comes along with their contract, cuts a big V out, and all the residents are angry about that, but the utility has it right away. And then if a tree does come down, it takes out the power source, not just to that block, but to maybe several blocks around it. So as we move forward, planting the trees for the trees that come down, to replace the trees that come down, definitely should be done through the tree tenders of Harford Township, right?
And let's not forget Richard Dougherty in the Public Works Department. He's on vacation, but he's done a great job, Doc.
Absolutely, yeah, don't get me wrong. Well, not only him, even the fire companies, I mean, I was, I saw Manoa respond several times in my neighborhood. They were running around crazy, the police were running around crazy, the volunteers, the fire police were out there, I mean, it was, you know, these storms were, when that last storm that came through was pretty significant. Was it the last one that really knocked trees down? It was the one before that. The one before that was really significant. The wind was really unbelievable when it hit. We were like a direct hit, Harford was, at least. And that's where it knocked down the, what's that, Swiss Farms?
Swiss Farms, yeah, the.
Silo.
The silo came down, right. So we're lucky no one was, we're, thank God, no one was injured.
Yeah. Silo was now silo.
Thank you very much. Any other committee reports?
You're open with the storage facility.
Take a motion?
Okay. Motion for the rights of.
We are adjourned.